...of Education. Today is Wednesday, March 4th. The time is 7:03. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Curtis, here. Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mrs. Gordon?
Here.
And Mrs. DeFabi, oh, that's us.
Okay. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, good evening and welcome, parents, visitors, and administration of Samuel Bissell Elementary School and R.B. Chamberlain Middle School. I'm Mark Curtis, and I appreciate the honor of being your board president. It looks as though the weather is breaking and opportunities for snow days are dwindling. Bad news, I know, but have no fear because spring break is not far, it's near. Well, I might as well go too soon, but I'm knocking on wood, so we should be okay. We know that there are many wonderful things going on in the classrooms, and your student achievement is demonstrated by your being chosen to be here for this acknowledgement this evening. I'd like to report that the students and staff of Dodge Intermediate School was visited last Thursday by our state representative, Casey Weinstein. During the visit, he was able to see firsthand, excuse me, how our teachers are using technology to deliver high-quality instruction to students. He was able to see students using Makerspaces and also ask them questions about their learning and gather feedback as to things that he should focus on while he's in Columbus, and, believe me, they gave him an airful. So, he's prepared to kind of do some things down there based on the feedback that he got, but we appreciate that he took the time to visit, and he assured us that he will do the same in other buildings. He won't be a stranger, he'll try to make it back to the district to see what's going on in other school buildings. I'd like to also take the opportunity to bring you up to speed on what is happening in the State House regarding Ed-Choice legislation. Recall that I announced in a prior meeting that this board passed a resolution against education choice vouchers to families that allow our public tax dollars to flow to families that choose to attend private field schools. And we've communicated our concerns to Representative Weinstein as well as our state senator, Christina Rohner. Over the last month and a half, many representatives of school boards and superintendents have either personally testified before committees or submitted written testimony asking members to oppose further expansion of this program. Although we are not currently impacted by this proposed legislation or expansion, the eligibility rules as drafted allow for the possibility in the future. The financial impact of this program is devastating to many school districts throughout the state. We seek to protect your tax dollars and allow us to use them for the purposes for which they are intended, to provide the very best educational opportunities that are available to your students. Since our last announcement, the Senate and House have been unable to come to consensus on a solution, and they are now in recess. Both chambers are scheduled to resume session the week of March 23rd, which only provides nine days for the House and Senate to come to consensus on a resolution before the April 1st deadline that was previously extended. I urge you, as constituents, to continue reaching out to our elected officials in Columbus to push for a resolution that allows your tax dollars to stay local. Finally, Mr. John Brenner, who's the husband of Mary Ann Brenner and father of Tiffany Brenner, both of whom are board employees. He recently passed away suddenly over the weekend. Mr. Brenner was a substitute for the Twinsburg family. He is family, he was family, and the Brenners are well-known in our district, and they're dedicated to improving the lives of our children, and I ask that you keep the family in prayer during this difficult time. That being said, I will now turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Mrs. Powers, for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis, Board of Education. It is great to see everyone here this evening. Boys and girls, we have a lot to celebrate, but before we do that, I have just a couple of announcements to make, and I hope our moms and dads and community members are interested in all that information we're going to share. First of all, it is time to register our kindergarten children for school. And Board of Education, this is the incoming class of 2033, believe it or not. And I'm going to ask Mrs. Harving if she can please display up here on the screen the district website, because if you are a new member to our community and new family, you may not know where to go to begin to preregister your child for kindergarten, so please, I'll have a little page here while we demonstrate this. So, if you are an interested parent and you have a young one who is going to be five years of age before August 1st of this year, you're going to be asked to visit the district website, and there it is, www.twinsburg.k12.oh.us, and you find the "For Parents" tab at the top of the website there. That's our homepage page. If you click on "For Parents" and you scroll down to "Registration Information" and click there, that will take you to the forms that you need to use to preregister your child for kindergarten registration, and the directions are pretty easy to follow there on the district website. If you do have a five-year-old child at home or a child who will turn the age of five before August 1st, we encourage you to please go online here and to preregister for an appointment. Kindergarten registration will be held on April 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, just around the corner, and you must have your child preregistered this way in order to be able to get an appointment on April 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. We really encourage our parents who have young ones to register early so that we can plan accordingly, so that we have the appropriate numbers of staff members, we have the appropriate materials, the school is ready over at Wilcox Primary. And also, just so everybody knows, on Tuesday, March 10th, which is next Tuesday, we are going to be hosting our kindergarten parent kickoff. So, once again, if you have a young one at home, the kindergarten parent kickoff is next Tuesday, March 10th, at 6 o'clock, and it will be at Wilcox Primary School. Ms. Lynn Villa is our principal over at Wilcox. She's very excited to welcome the class of 2033, and so we encourage our parents to please stop by the parent kickoff next Tuesday, and also please remember to preregister for an appointment so that you get a time that you need to be able to register your child on April 21st, 22nd, or 23rd. And has been the case for many years now, we are holding kindergarten registration at the Twinsburg Community Center that's actually located past the swimming pool behind R.B. Chamberlain Middle School, if you're unfamiliar, and you can always call the district board office or Wilcox Primary School, and we'll be more than happy to help you with either getting yourself preregistered or if you need directions to the community center, happy to help you with that as well. So, pretty excited to welcome the class of 2033. I'm not going to tell you when I graduate because it was a long time ago, but we're excited to greet our new ones to the world of being a Tiger, so thanks for preregistering early. Board of Education, we're just so very proud of our high school orchestra. For the seventh straight year in a row, Mr. Damon Kahn, who is our director of orchestra programs in our school district, and our students were rated superior in the Reason Ohio Music Educators Association Contest. That is a huge accomplishment to be rated superior for seven years in a row at the state contest, so we're extremely proud of Mr. Kahn and our talented Tigers, and we congratulate them on the seventh straight year in a row being rated superior amongst their peers in the world of high school orchestras. And if you have never heard them, you must, they're just fantastic. Board of Education, as you know, we continue to stay abreast of the details regarding the coronavirus, otherwise known as COVID-19. Earlier today, our director of human services, Mr. Solomon and I participated in a conference call with the Summit County Public Health Department. Here's some important information that we learned during the call today. First of all, the Summit County Public Health Department wants everyone to know first and foremost to please stay calm, right? Doesn't help if we get anxious about this, we must all remain calm. Secondly, the public health officials are expecting the coronavirus to spread in Summit County, it's a matter of time, they're telling us. Number three, it is now confirmed that individuals who are infected with the coronavirus can, in fact, become ill a second time with the virus. They thought a person who contracted this would only become ill once, now they're thinking it might be a repeated illness, so we have to be careful. Fourth, individuals who have a fever of 100.4 and higher and who are experiencing respiratory difficulties are asked to please stay home from work or school and to call their primary healthcare provider. If conditions worsen, and if possible, the public health officials are asking individuals, before they report to the emergency room, so you want it to report to UH or Cleveland Clinicure in town, they're asking you to please call ahead so that they can be prepared to greet individuals who are showing symptoms of coronavirus. Number six, public health officials told us that most patients will be sent home to heal. So, they're not expecting to have widespread hospitalization with this, they're going to identify whether or not a person is showing the signs of coronavirus, and that most folks are going to be sent home to heal. Seventh, public health officials asked school administrators to introduce to our communities the idea of social distancing. So, what that means, Board of Education, they're asking when you are in a theater or you are in church or you are here, for example, that you would be seated every other row, and so if somebody behind you is experiencing a cough or sneezing, that you won't be immediately impacted by what that person happens to be dealing with. So, we are going to be introducing the idea of social distancing to our students. We actually have a principal's meeting tomorrow morning, and so you'll be hearing much more about social distancing in the media here in the short term. More than anything else, the Summit County Public Health Department is asking everyone to please just practice good hygiene, and what they mean by that is to avoid close contact with people who are sick, avoid touching your nose and eyes and mouth, and please stay home if you are feeling ill, please cover your cough or sneeze with tissues and then throw those in the trash. Please clean and disinfect frequently, and families, you know that last week I sent home a notice explaining how our custodians are working really hard to keep our buildings disinfected. Mr. Welker has done an excellent job in making sure we were pre-branded in this effort, and we have electrostatic sprayers, we have the right disinfectant here in the district, we have plenty of hand soap, and so our custodians are doing a great job of keeping our buildings clean, but we are asking that our families please remind our children that when they're using the restroom or when they cough or sneeze or whatever, and please make sure that they wash their hands well with soap and water, and to just keep practicing that. That's the best way to fight this virus is to make sure that we're practicing good hygiene habits. Board of Education will continue to post information about the coronavirus and COVID-19. As I indicated, tomorrow, the principals will be meeting to discuss particular things for the buildings, we will communicate that to our families. On Friday morning, I will be meeting with union officials here in the school district and talk about some labor issues related to coronavirus. Next Monday, we have a meeting with city officials. So, the school district is being very planful, we are being responsive, and we are going to continue to communicate to our families the information that we have from the Summit County Public Health Department as well as from the CDC, and if you have any questions about anything, please make sure that you give us a call. One final thing, parents, when your child is experiencing any illness and you have to call them off from school, if it is a flu symptom or if your child is identified as a child with coronavirus, when you call your child off to the school office, would you please be sure that you're specific in telling us the reason why your child is home from school? The Board of Education knows that for several weeks now, we've been monitoring student attendance and reasons why kids are not in school, and our percentage of students off because of the flu has been less than 4%. But see, that's self-reported, and I don't know if when moms and dads are calling, if they're saying, "My child has the flu," or "My child is sick," because it's two different things. So, you can help us be more responsive to the needs of our community, and you can be more specific when you make those calls so that we know how to react accordingly. So, we thank you for your help in that. And finally, Mr. Curtis and Board, you know, tonight on the agenda, we have a very important resolution, and that is the contract with our Twinsburg Support Staff Association. We're excited and hopeful that the board will pass the resolution to ratify the classified union contract. It's been several months of conversations with our classified members of our staff, and we are happy now to present to you formally tonight the contract for hopeful approval, so we thank you for that consideration. So, lots on the agenda tonight, right, and lots to talk about, but we are here to celebrate students' first and foremost, so I would like to ask Mr. Scott Winter, who is here to represent Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and Mrs. Misty Johnson, to please come forward. Let's celebrate some kids.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for being here. Truly is a pleasure for me to be here this evening to recognize some fantastic second and third graders, but it also gives me an opportunity to catch up with some old friends who have moved on to RBC and Dodge, so it's really a wonderful night for all of us, so congratulations to everyone who's here this evening. But as Mrs. Powers said, I'm Scott Winter, I'm the assistant principal at Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and we're here to recognize some fantastic students. The Students of the Month program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognizes outstanding student achievement at the second and third grade levels. The focus of this recognition program is on citizenship, academics, social, civic, volunteer, or other accomplishments that set this student apart from their peers. We would like to proudly acknowledge the positive accomplishments of the following students. And boys and girls, when I call your name, we'll come on up, we'll shake some hands or bump some fists to you, and get your certificate, and then what I want you to do is just come out here to the front, and we're just going to stand right here with our certificates right before us, okay? All right, so we're going to go ahead and get started with Trinity Dean, second grader from Ms. Conrad's class. From Mr. Robles' class, second grader Lucas Fantone. From Mrs. Doyle's class, second grader Adi Shaw. From Ms. Conrad's class, second grader Jackie Tate. And from Mrs. Springer's second grade class, Elena Varga. All right, guys, go ahead and put your certificates up in front so we can get some pictures here. All right.
Great job, guys. Congratulations.
All right, now at this time, we'll announce our Students of the Month for third grade, starting with Molly Cromer from Mrs. Potkalitsky's class. From Mrs. Depew's class, Nicholas Kelly. From Mrs. Glavick's class, Jada Scoville. And from Ms. Belinski's class, Gavin Statikert-Gelly. So, just wanted to just say one thing before I turn it over to Mrs. Moore to recognize some fantastic students from R.B. Chamberlain. We have a lot of great programs coming up for the remainder of the school year. We've got Career Day, Field Day, we've got some anti-bullying assemblies coming up, we've got a family fun night put on by our fabulous PTA, and all that information can be found on the website, which we just took a look at earlier tonight, and also, information can be found by following myself or Mrs. Johnson on Twitter. So, like I said, we've got a lot of great things going on for the rest of the school year, and once again, thank you also very much for being here, and my boys and girls, if you wouldn't mind hanging out while we recognize some fantastic students from RBC, that'd be fantastic, and at this time, I'm going to welcome Mrs. Lisa Moore, assistant principal from RBC.
Do you want a chair?
Good evening, everyone. And just to note, we've heard some kind of sad unsettling sometimes when we hear about the virus and all of that stuff, but just want to tell everybody, be thankful for little things, like my ankle, like if you have a working ankle right now, that's something to be happy about. Okay, so, all right, so we have something special that we don't usually do from RBC, we're going to do a presentation. We have some fantastic, talented students, and Ms. Jimenez is going to present them after we do the Students of the Month. So, for our Students of the Month for February, they're recognized by the following criteria: shows respect and consideration for others, shows enthusiasm for academic and extracurricular activities, exerts a positive influence on classmates, exhibits leadership characteristics, exhibits patriotism and democratic principles, and shows responsibility. So, each student meets all criteria for their grade level, and we have two boys and two girls selected each month from each grade. So, I'm going to call seventh graders and then eighth graders, so come on up, and we're going to look just like the little ones did. Okay, seventh grade, Brianna Cox. We fist bump a lot at RBC, occasional fist bumps, that's what we do. Okay, Jack Ribis. Little Falkenberg. And Andrew Surles. Eighth grade, Jessica Gay. Jessica's not here, Jade Ndi. Elizabeth Harrison. And Nicholas Kirkpatrick. So, now we're going to do our special presentation, and I'm going to give the mic to him soon. Oh, we need to do pictures first. Pictures, pictures. Congratulations, February Students of the Month.
Do you want a chair?
Okay, good evening. First, I'd like to invite up Laura Dory and the Ladies Auxiliary, as well as any of the local veterans that are in attendance today. Come on up. Thank you for coming. First of all, thank you for all you do for our Twinsburg students, promoting patriotism, fostering citizenship within our district, and just getting to know the students and taking the time to hang out with them, but more importantly, to promote creative writing, which is why I'm here tonight. Many of my students took part in the Patriot Pen Essay Contest, and tonight, our local VFW is here to award those phenomenal students in their excellent writing. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Laura Dory.
Good evening. Patriots Pen is a contest sponsored by the VFW and the VFW Auxiliary. Every year, Patriots Pen is for students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and we also have the Voice of Democracy Contest for senior high school students. Now, in Twinsburg, we didn't have any participants in the high school contest, but Mrs. Jimenez always encourages her students to write for the Patriots Pen, and that's how we can be here tonight. So, I thank her and all the school board members in the school district for having such excellent students here. I mean, it's incredible when you read the essays that they write at seventh grade, I think I was maybe 13 or 14, I couldn't have written like that, but these students are very well-trained by their teachers and excellent, they have excellent thought processes. So, we do have some awards to give tonight. We have certificates for, I don't know how many are here, but we can start, we had first, second, and third place winners, and we also had eight honorable mentions. Now, Mrs. Jimenez had 39 students, so it was a hard job to pick, you know, several judges read the essays and picked 11 very notable essays. So, without further ado, we'll try to present the certificates of those who are here.
Okay, first, Leanne Seepes, come on up. Shreya Daria, come on up. Fox Gansler. Okay, Gavin O'Keefe. Cameron Pedersen. Marlena Riley. Gavin Varnow. Emily Zimmerman. Okay, our third place winner is Megan McHugh. Second place is Jaren Jen. And first place goes to Armand Edelin.
The rest of the students that participated from Ms. Jimenez's class will get certificates back in the classroom, and I just want to tell you, the theme this year was "What Makes America Great?", and you should hear what some of them said. Like, Megan says, "As you can see, America's freedoms, resources, technology, and schooling are what makes America great. From technological advancements to schooling, America is becoming greater every day." And Jaren said, "America is a great country because of freedoms, the military, and the people. I hope that America stays as great as it is currently forever." And Armand said, "Opportunities and diversity are the two areas, I think, that make America stand out. I know that my parents value these elements and are glad that their kids get to share in experiencing the opportunities and diversity too." If you can believe, these are statements that they wrote. I think it's pretty amazing, pretty phenomenal, that seventh graders do this. We want to thank Mrs. Jimenez as well. The VFW Auxiliary wants to give her a certificate and a thank you too, because she has helped me throughout the years organize the contest and get the entries in and make sure everything's fine, so, thank you very much.
Pictures. Thank you, guys, and once again, congratulations.
We are so privileged to have such a wonderful, we're here in town, as well as the veterans from our local post, and Ms. Jimenez, thank you so very much for your work to encourage our young ones to understand what it means to be an American, and to be proud of the country that we live in. So, we thank you for your efforts, and boys and girls, congratulations, and thank you for showing what it means to be an American in your writing. That is such an important thing, to be proud to live in the United States, and to be proud of being a citizen in our great country, so we thank you for that, too. Board of Education, that concludes our comments for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. So, before we conclude with the rest of our agenda, you are welcome to stay for the business portion of the meeting, but if you choose not to, this would be the time. I'm sure you have a lot of things to do this evening, so, we appreciate you coming, and congratulations to all the students who were recognized this evening.
I'll give you my copy, too, which is just Twinsburg. I'm just gonna read a bunch.
I'm not saying where you are.
How would you pronounce that? Third name, third name coming down, how would you pronounce that? I'm gonna butcher it. I got a lot of names to read.
Did you bring enough?
Okay, we're gonna move on to item three under Communications with Committee Reports. Does anyone have any reports, or report out for committee?
I have CVCC, if you'd like to. And what I've learned in my second meeting is a Mark Curtis fashion report. Someone gave a legislation report, and they said it was reminiscent of Mark, so, you're still lingering at that chamber, but the CVCC Board met on the twenty-seventh, and the Policy Committee also met, of which I'm a member, really just some housekeeping policies, very similar to what we've done in our district. We heard a very interesting presentation from staff that worked with the Sales and Service Transition to Work Program, and these are students with developmental and physical disabilities. That was a great program, and you'd be proud of a lot of the community businesses that have been working with that population for many years. I've got a bunch of names to read, and I thought it was just kind of appropriate, 'cause these students may not get recognition, but I figured since we're broadcasting, get some of their names. On April first, the National Technical Honor Society will be conducting their annual induction, and unfortunately, that's the night of our board meeting, so I can't be there, and on this particular report, I only have the last names. But, last name of Guile in Educational Professions, this is grade eleven, these are all grade eleven. Last name Kumar in Media Arts, Nagayan in Cosmetology, Powers in Fire and EMS Academy, and Wilson in Media Arts. Those students are all gonna be inducted into that Hall of Fame, so to speak, a society. Also, a whole bunch of other names that I thought maybe deserve recognition, and make us kind of proud, proud of our Tigers. They have a hundred percent club, perfect attendance, which I'm always amazed at graduation, knows that do four years. This is for the second quarter of CVCC. Joey Alexander from Heating and Air Conditioning, Bailey Bealoski from Hotels and Resorts, Justine Collins, Cosmetology, Caitlin Dreams, Culinary Arts, Adeline Girl, oh, there's the first name, from Health Careers, Angela Hairston from Power Equipment Technology, again, these are all one hundred percent attendance, Andrew Henderson from Electrical Systems, Jenny Jakovsky from Health Careers, Dalton Korekki from Sports Medicine and Exercise Science, Darryl Kirkpatrick, Fire and EMS Academy, Dushar Kumar from Health Careers, Yaminie Kumar from Media Arts, Colin Lesko, Transition to Work, Jonah Myers, Engineering Technology, Brendan Nagayan from Programming and Software Development, Tao Nagayan from Cosmetology, Henry Ovale, Power Equipment Technology, Morgan Powers, Fire and EMS Academy, Angela Rose from Cosmetology, Jonathan Shemesky from Programming and Software, Danielle Semicek from Heating and Air Conditioning, Nick Snaden, Computer Networking Academy, Mallory Titus from Digital Design, Colin Unwin, Fire and EMS Academy, Jania Walker from Health Careers, Troy Williams, Fire and EMS Academy, Alyssa Willis, Health Careers, and Sierra Wilson, Media Arts. So, congratulations to that group of students that had a hundred percent attendance, but we're not done, because Twinsburg's bringing back some hardware. They hosted on February first was the Health Occupation Students of America Regional Two Conference and Competition, which is really three hundred competitions in over forty healthcare careers, and Twinsburg has some nice placements. Xavier Branch from Dental Assisting took second place, that's a state qualifier. Adeline Guile from Health Careers, first place, Biomedical Debate, and that's a state qualifier. Umira Hill, Health Careers, and that was in Biomedical Debate, a first place again, and a state qualifier. And Jania Walker, Health Careers, first place, Biomedical Debate, and a state qualifier. Another contest was the Business Professionals of America Regional Contest, and Jonathan Shemesky from Programming and Software Development took second place in Java Programming, these are all state qualifiers. Selen Sparks, Network Design Team, first place. Avery Stokes Thomas, Medical Administrative Specialist, another first place in Extemporaneous Speech, again, state qualifiers. And last but not least, in the Graphic Imaging Technical Program, Shania Robinson took a silver in Graphic Imaging Technology, and the contest was the Graphic Media Alliance Print Excellent Awards, and that's a state winner. So, congratulations to all those Tigers, making us proud, and I think that is, I won't do a Mark Curtis legislative report, but, had a rivalry a little bit, but that, that apart from the standard agenda, was CVC's monthly board meeting.
That is amazing, and that's probably the longest, that's the longest list of names.
Yeah, there's quite a bit there. At first, I was like, do I read them? I'm like, they need recognition, so I'm gonna give this to Mrs. Powers.
Yeah, and I'll, you know, they do these competitions every year, so this is just the state level, and I'm hoping that we do well, that the folks that place well enough to go to Nationals, because they get to travel to some pretty cool places, and have some great experiences, so, I am looking forward to the next report as to how they do at Nationals. So, thank you very much for that report. Any other reports for committees?
Okay, hearing none. Mr. Aho, we're on to Remind, do you have any thoughts?
No, Curtis.
So, then I will move to item G, Action Items Personnel. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read G one through three together. G one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the Certified Licensed Personnel Indoor Contract Recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the Classified Personnel Indoor Contract Recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the Supplemental Contract Recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Do I have a motion for G one through three?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Davis. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Gordon. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. Item carries four zero. Next is H, Action Items New Business. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read H one through eight together. H one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts an anonymous donation in the amount of one hundred and ninety dollars to the Twinsburg City School District to offset the cost of tickets for students to participate in the Academy at Twinsburg High School to attend the MAC Basketball Tournament, and panel of speakers discussion at the Rocket Mortgage Field House on Friday, March thirteenth, per the attached exhibit. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listing of Media Center Items to be deleted from inventory, per the attached exhibit. Three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following items to be deleted from inventory upon recommendation of the superintendent. Four, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a contract with the Education Alternatives Ravenna for one student to attend the day treatment program for the remainder of the nineteen-twenty school year, for an amount not to exceed eight thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. Five, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a contract with Education Alternatives Ravenna for one student to attend the day treatment program for the remainder of the nineteen-twenty school year, for an amount not to exceed eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. Six, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the rental agreement with the University of Akron to use the Edwin J. Thomas Performing Arts Hall on Sunday, May thirty-first, 2020, for the purposes of the Twinsburg High School commencement for the class of 2020, as sent to the board under separate cover. Seven, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School Great Expectations Show Choir to travel to the Disney World Orlando, Florida, for the Heart of America Show Choir Competition on March twentieth, and returning on March twenty-third. Cost of this trip is being paid in full by the Twinsburg Vocal Music Boosters, as sent to the board under separate cover. And eight, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an extended, I mean, for an overnight extended student trip for the high school wrestling team to travel to Columbus for the OHSAA State Wrestling Tournament on Thursday, March twelfth, and returning on Saturday, March fourteenth. The cost of the trip is being paid by the Twinsburg Athletic Department with financial assistance from the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, as sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion for H one through eight?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Felber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. I would like to thank, release, thank the anonymous person for the donation. Usually, it's listed in there with maybe the donation, but it's anonymous, of one hundred and ninety dollars to the school district to offset the cost of the tickets for the Twinsburg Academy. We always appreciate donations that assist us in doing what we do. Also, good luck to our Great Expectations Show Choir. I have no doubt that they're gonna do very well, and maybe bring back some hardwood, hard hardware, you know, with their performance. And also, good luck to the, to our wrestling team as they travel down to Columbus for states. Any other, any other comments for H one through eight? Okay, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. And that motion passes for zero. Next is H nine, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approve and adopt the negotiated agreement between the Board of Edu-, between the Board and the Twinsburg Support Staff Association for the period of July first, 2019, through June thirtieth, 2022, as sent to the board under separate cover. I will make the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Excuse me, second by Mrs. Davis. I'd like to express our appreciation to the TSSA in working with the Board and our negotiating team, negotiation team, for coming to agreement on a contract that we think is fair and equitable to the TSSA and their members, and also to the Board of Education. I want to say that I sincerely appreciate all that they do for the district. The district cannot function without these individuals. Oftentimes, they are the first faces that our students see, either they're a bus driver, or they're a secretary, or perhaps a custodian, or whatever capacity that they serve. They assist us in moving our district forward in a lot of different ways that aren't necessarily in the classroom, but they're also nonetheless extremely effective in doing what they do, and they are needed. And again, I sincerely personally appreciate all that they do, and I'm happy that we were able to come to agreement to continue good working conditions for them moving forward. Any other comments from my colleagues?
Yes, and just to, you stole some of the words that I was, but, what can we- Yes, and just to, you stole some of the words that I was, but what can we say? We do appreciate all of our support staff. And as Mr. Curtis said from the beginning of the day, even just a smile from the bus driver can maybe start to turn a kid's day around. And at the end of the day, a handshake, or goodbye, or whatever, from the custodian staff or the people who work in the office. And everybody working together is what helps our schools function. And I, I mean, without our support staff, we couldn't really function the way we do. And we appreciate them, and we appreciate, you know, everything they do for us. And, and I'm just glad we were able to get this done and settled, and everybody can move forward in a positive direction.
All right, just did it on what my colleagues say. It's from a board perspective, it's a tough balance between our fiduciary responsibilities. The forecasting that we work with our treasurer and our superintendent, it's not easy to look into a crystal ball and see what the economy's gonna be and, and, you know, the impacts that we've seen just in the last couple days. And we have to forecast out, you know, three-year contracts. So we're glad that we have this agreement, and as they said, they do great work. And it's a, it's a nice balance between, you know, keeping the district in good financial straits and keeping a good quality employment base as well.
I don't have a lot to add. I came in on 11th hour, but I'm really glad it's agreed upon, and we're moving ahead.
Board of Education, just the highlights. I think the residents would be a bit interested. So the agreement includes a two and a quarter percent increase for each of the next three years. The contract, as Mr. Curtis read, goes through June of, end of June of 2022. There was the addition of Step 25 on each of the salary schedules on the classified contract. Depending on your classification, whether you're administrative assistant, or a bus driver, or a mechanic, you have your own salary schedule. So Step 25 was added to each of those because we have employees that are here for a very long time, and we appreciate their commitment to our school district. So we're appreciative of that addition on the salary schedule. The healthcare benefits will raise to a, increase to 14% for employees who work 30 hours per week. And that aligns to the language that is currently in the contract for Twinsburg Education Association. And then finally, we had additional language modifications, and these are just some of the areas, and sick leave, personal, jury duty, and overtime, and building checks, and staff evaluations, and stipends for instructional assistants, and in bus routes, and in other areas too. But those were areas that were of pretty big significance. So Board of Education, I also appreciate the members of the Board's bargaining team, Mr. Aho, Mr. Fran Martino, Mr. House before he left for Westlake, Mr. Welker, and Mr. Sollen. Join me as a member of your team and worked diligently to come to consensus with Mr. Hager and the TSSA team. As the Board indicates, we really do appreciate the work of all of our members of our staff, including and classified members of our staff. It takes a whole lot of hands to make things happen every day. We appreciate the dedication, and we appreciate the diligence in reaching an agreement that is a fair one, not only for the members of our bargaining unit, but also for the community too. Because we know that it's from the support of our community that we can offer this contract so that we can attract the very best employees to support our kids every day. So thank you for your consideration this evening.
Okay, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Gordon?
Yes.
Okay, I'm pleased to announce that this unanimously passes for 0. Next, item I, Ms. Laney's.
If you're hungry, you will certainly be hungry on Saturday. Come out to the Blue Ribbon Schools Pancake Breakfast. There's also gonna be, PT's got a carnival, Chambers got a whole bunch of business expos as well. And there's still, still plenty of time to get tickets. I don't know if you want to talk about some of the incentives, or someone planning on doing that? For the evening at the Cavs, this is a Twinsburg Schools Foundation event, same day, Saturday, March 7th. You get a back scenes tour of Rocket Mortgage Field House. And we were just told they kind of upped the incentive. There's gonna be some raffles at the pancake breakfast. There's two different autograph, basketballs, am I correct? One that they just added, you have a chance to win. I know one is Chris, is Thompson. Tristan, no, I say Tristan, Tristan Thompson. And so, you know, definitely come out to that, come out to all the events on Saturday morning. You can still get your tickets. I think we have 161 folks already coming to that event. So that should be really cool, representing Twinsburg. And several of our local businesses will be honored on the floor. And I think they're gonna pick one student from the group to come out and be a ball boy or girl, or something like that. So lot going on Saturday, be a long day. There will be excellent circumference on pancakes by Mr. Sollen, who is very particular about how the batter gets put, put down, as long as he doesn't bump the oven this year, so. I'll be side by, I'll be side by side. You knew I was gonna bring that up. But definitely, both great events. You can still get your tickets online. twinsburgschoolsfoundation.org for the basketball, and just come on out, be hungry for pancakes Saturday morning.
Just a little commercial for the Cavs event. We were asked to identify two businesses that support the Twinsburg Schools from the foundation. And Dolph Kelly from Visual Marketing Systems, the owner of Visual Marketing Systems, has just been such a supporter of the district. All the banners that you see around the district, those, that's the word for EMS. And so he will be, he and his wife and a couple of their employees are my guests, and they are going to be announced at the, at, before game begins. And then the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce is our second business partner that we're going to recognize because of their work with us through the academy. So Angelo Carcerpolo and his wife are my guests, and they are going to be announced as well pre-game at half court. So it'll be a very nice event.
And then I was gonna add, and Mr. Anakin, I think stressed, or told us about the, when he spoke about it. So you get the, for the cost of the ticket, there's no fees. And for, if you're on the fence about it, you still get a, you get a free t-shirt, you get a Cavs drawstring bag, and of course, the tour. So, and that's all just for the cost of the ticket with no extra fees added on top of it, so not a bad deal.
Should be, should be good. You got, just Andrew?
My son, Brian and Andrew.
So a couple of things for me. I know I mentioned in my President's Report about Representative Weinstein's visit. What I did not say in my report is that I was able to be there as well as Mr. Felber, along with a few of our central office staff and staff at Dodge. And it's a pretty cool thing where, you know, he's able to go into the classrooms and, you know, this is in the midst of lessons that are happening. So, you know, these kids were in different stations, doing different things. We had the maker spaces going, they had iPads, you know, they had Chromebooks. And they were kind of explaining, you know, what they were doing and kind of, you know, what the end product would be. And I was pretty amazed, you know, we've done tours of the buildings and kind of got, you know, a firsthand account of what they're doing. But this was a little different because they're kind of explaining things rather than us just popping in a classroom and the teacher kind of, you know, giving, you know, a little overview of kind of what they're doing. This was more where students were really engaged with Representative Weinstein and everyone else who was there and kind of explaining to us what was going on. And what I also was very proud of is that when Representative Weinstein opened the floor for questions, one of the things that he was always, one thing that he would always lead with is that, look, you're my boss, and I need to get feedback from you as to things that you would like to see, that you don't have going on in the district, things that you want to know, and also if you have questions of me, kind of what, things that I'm, what I'm doing. So they asked a lot of great questions, and they did, they did give him feedback. He offered his business card so that if they wanted to give him a call, or if they wanted to send him things, that he was, he was open to that. I think that, I know that he enjoyed the visit. But I was really impressed with our kids, especially at that age, how well they were able to articulate what they were doing and also explain some of the things that were hap, that was happening, because he had a lot of questions, and they were able to answer them very well. I want to give kudos to the teachers as well in those classrooms that were leading, you know, leading the discussion and leading the lessons. I think they do a phenomenal job. We saw the co-teaching on full display and blended learning as well. So all of the things that these teachers have presented for us, we were actually able to see that in action. But more importantly, Representative Weinstein was able to see that, so.
I appreciate him coming too, because that was exciting start to the day, wasn't it, the two hours, no delay? So appreciate that he was still able to make it, and that the kids were still focused after the hectic start to the day.
So and the other thing is that I was able to go to the last basketball game that we had. And I just want to, you know, give kudos to the basketball team. I think they had a great season this year, and they fought hard up until halftime. It was tied. I think we were actually ahead by a basket. And then the second half, you know, they fought, they didn't come out with the win. But I think the effort nonetheless deserves some attention. And I think that they're gonna do well in the future. And our seniors, I think they made us really proud going out, so just wanted to make sure I gave them a shout out.
Just one last thing. Last Saturday was the North Coast Show Choir Invitational. It was packed house. It was just a phenomenal day of show choir performances. We want to thank the Twinsburg Vocal Music Boosters. They come out in a huge room, and we couldn't do that without their help. So I want to thank Mrs. Joey Yee, who is the president of TBMB, and all the volunteers, hundreds and hundreds of volunteers that were helping. I do believe Medina Show Choir won the event as grand champion. And then speaking of grand champions board, our RBC Singers have been grand champions the last two weekends at Medina and at Sollen. And they performed Saturday, they opened the night competition. If you have a chance to see the RBC Singers, they, they are phenomenal. Mr. Brian Detweiler is the musical director of the RBC Singers. And I have been to so many show choir performances by GE, by the swingers, by, by RBC Singers. This year's show is really something to see. The choreography is just exquisite. So congratulations to Mr. Brian Detweiler and the RBC Singers. They're, they're just knocking my socks off. I came back to the Board Office on Monday and told the central office, you guys have got to see them. They're just amazing. So congratulations to them too.
Awesome, awesome. Okay, for item J, Executive Session, we do have a need for executive session. So the Board will enter into executive session at 8:05 to discuss employment and compensation of public employees as per Board of Education Policy 0166, to discuss specialized details of security arrangements and emergency response protocols as per Board Policy, as, for Board of Education Policy 0166G, and prior to that, 0166A. And to discuss a matter required to be confidential by federal law or state statute as per Board of Education Policy 0166F. I will make the motion to go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Gordon?
Yes.
Okay, we are now in executive session, and when we reconvene, I do not anticipate that we will be conducting further business. Thank you.